I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of Tuesday, November 15th. And if we would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I would just like to take a moment to reflect on the life of Bob Sheehy who passed away last Thursday. Denise, roll call.
Councilmember Cassidy?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Sampson?
Here.
Member Tom Olson?
Here.
And Mayor Marshall?
Here. Announcements?
I have none.
Written communications?
I have none. I don't know if David does.
David, do you have any written communications?
No ma'am, not to report this evening, no.
Okay. Alrighty, do we have a city manager report?
Thank you Mayor, good evening Mayor and Council. I have just a few things I wanted to update you on. The first is, we have inquired of Vons as to the status of the project, both on the 9th and 14th of November regarding the status of their conditions of approval, their estimated start date. We've not yet heard back, but I'm certain we will. We did receive a letter of support from the CEO of the Catalina Island Conservancy, Mr. Budrovic, who said he supports our, your efforts to secure a stable water source and to connect Hamilton Cove to the water system, the freshwater system. At the December 6th meeting, we'll be asking the City Council to request proposals from competent firms to develop interim development impact fees first, and then a final fee product so that future development is assured to pay its own way. I'd like to thank the Public Works Department for their work in installing accessibility ramps on Beacon and Metropole, they did a great job. We are retaining the services of an arborist to examine several eucalyptus tree locations on public and private property lands to determine and document the safety of the trees and proceed where necessary with abatement proceedings on those trees where owners will not fix them. The cost of the arborist, we believe, will be paid by Parsac. We are waiting to hear back from the Long Beach Unified School District on recreation facilities and from the Los Angeles Regional Water Quality Control Board on private desalinization. Thank you, Matt Mayor.
Very good, thank you. City Attorney Report?
Yeah, just, our office has arranged an initial meeting with the PUC staff for Friday, December 2nd. So the city manager and I will be meeting with staff. This will be the first of what may be several meetings, and we'll report back to you at the next meeting.
Perfect. Councilmember reports. Who would like to begin?
I'll do mine really quick, because, well, not really quick, but I want to link on to what you were just announcing. What will you guys be discussing at that meeting? Can you just go over that briefly? I mean, like, what your bullet points are gonna be? I mean, I know we already talked about it, but can you just fill us in on exactly what? And I'm sure you, you know, you still have time to get your thoughts together on that, but basically, what will you be discussing and what will you be asking the Public Utilities Commission?
Yeah, basically, Councilmember Sampson, we will be saying nothing different than what we have said to you publicly or to the public. We will be urging their encouragement and support of our efforts and that of Southern California Edison to work cooperatively toward a sustainable water solution with storage, with new wells. We would like to see undoubtedly that they would support our efforts, our collective efforts, to get grant funds because of the unique location of Avalon on an island in the Pacific Ocean. And also, I think we'll be seeking their insight as regulator of water purveyors throughout the entire state, just some advice that they might be able to give us that would be useful in our discussions with our friends at Southern California Edison.
And I would just say, I would also be discussing the tariff and the implementation of the drought levels and ways in that we can work with them to encourage Edison to amend the tariff or reduce the restrictions currently on Avalon residents.
Okay. Very good. It was brought to my attention recently that Hamilton Cove is not on salt water for their toilets, right?
They have their own salt water.
They have their own salt water? Oh, okay. That's very refreshing news. Okay. Let's see, I just got a few announcements. Last meeting, we had, I had some people that were calling out to me about the camping situation on Catalina, and that was fixed. It was actually fixed the next day after the meeting. I had them call up and I had actually had people send me a few letters and said that they were able to get their camping reservations. So I just want to announce that if you want to make your camping reservations for Catalina Island, you can go ahead and do it now. The reservation system is back online and it's fixed and it's good to go. Now, I just want to ask a question about the roller coaster, which, I mean, basically it's inclusionary housing. I wanted to understand how it worked, and I had some people reach out to me from the community as well, and they wanted to understand inclusionary housing, how it's implemented. You had the island company have come up last meeting and they were requesting, or two meetings ago, and requesting housing cred, they said they had housing credits, but they really didn't, I guess, right?
Well, we just met with an hour, for about an hour today with the island company. They gave us about a half inch, maybe an inch, full of documents, which is also the background for their payrolls. And so we're looking through that and analyzing that in conjunction with the municipal code to see if they actually have credits or whether they owe us.
Okay.
So, we had that meeting today.
So, the community was reaching out to me and they wanted to understand it a little more. I don't know if we can put this as an agenda item, or maybe have Amanda come up and explain this to us a little more, just how it works and how, if you open a new business in town, how that's gonna affect your business and how it will work into, how it will benefit the community and the business as well. And then, also, the point was brought up, infrastructure, sewer, water, the electrical grid, things like that. How is it gonna work? And then, what's, what is the end game? How big is this community gonna grow? I think that's a question that we also have to ask, and that might be something that we discuss in the strategic planning, but I think it's something that we need to bring up on a regular basis and talk about it a little more and understand, how, what, how many people can we occupy here safely and efficiently and economically and something that's good for the people and good for our natural resources and the island that sustains us? So I really want to understand these things a little more. The community wants to understand it and they want to know what the big picture is. How big is it gonna grow?
And, Mayor, may I? Councilmember, that's really an excellent point, I think, and I think there, I've heard also that the Chamber of Commerce is talking about what is really our holding capacity? What is a desired holding capacity? And certainly, the general plan that you've adopted in 2013 should give some guidance, but what are the details of that? What would really, and this, you're spurring this discussion is on, is that what are the plans of major players in the, major friends, stakeholders? What are their long-term plans and how do they fit into the plans of the city? And to the extent that we're able to, the earlier we know those things, the more we are able to, you are able to weigh those and decide whether that vision is one that you are comfortable with. And so, I think that would be a good discussion. Certainly, Mayor, we could, you know, we could schedule a time for a presentation before the council on how our ordinance, your ordinance?
Yes.
How your ordinance works and the importance of housing in the whole scheme of things.
Exactly. Housing, and then we need to also understand the water, which we already know we have a water crisis, one way or another, it's gonna affect everybody. And I know that I generally tour the sewer treatment plant on a regular basis, just to go out, see how things are going, see if the guys need anything, see if, you know, I want to see how that's running. And it runs very efficiently and they do a great job at it, but as you know, it takes constant maintenance and constant improvements, as we know, as the community knows, because of the taxes that have been implemented this last, you know, this last quarter, that I'm getting a lot of feedback from, that it's very expensive. So, I know one thing, that sewer treatment plant also is very taxed as well. It's running at high capacity and it's at peak season. So, all these things, when we start thinking about growing the city, even if it's 100 people, we gotta start thinking about how we are going to implement new rules and regulations for sewer, for water, for our entire grid, quality of life, vehicles, maintenance, traffic, things like that, so. And I think that's all my announcements for right now.
Very good, thank you.
Sorry. I got a couple items. I attended the Gateway Cities Council of Government and Transportation meetings, I want to say the 3rd of November, I'm sorry, I didn't write the date down, and no notable action. I also attended the Veterans Day Memorial Ceremony last Friday, which was exceptional. Thank you to everybody who participated in that. And a couple quick questions, reminders. We were talking in the last couple meetings, September or October, about the exclusive negotiating agreement for housing, and I thought we were gonna have that on tonight's agenda. Is it maybe for the next one?
It would be the agreement. I got the day of the meeting, the final agreement, and I didn't have a chance to review it that day for the replacement, so it will be on your next agenda, yes ma'am.
Okay, great. So for the December agenda?
Yes.
Oh, great, okay. And then, a reminder, this is actually was Ollie's reminder too, reminder for monthly financial statements? Are we, hopefully we're getting closer to?
Yes, and I think the good news is, as the Director of Finance has said to you, that with the staffing that you authorized and now has been hired and onboard, that he will now be in a position to produce that document if Mr. Mesher has any other comments he can make, but I feel comfortable that he will, now staffed up, it will enable him to do that.
Great, that's all I've got.
Mayor Potell?
Last week, I attended the Chambers Marketing Meeting in Huntington Beach. Also went to Don Knobby's, thought it was his last going away party, but we got another one invitation today. It was at the Convention Center in Long Beach, it was very nice, well-attended. We're kinda sorry that Steve lost, but that be aside. Today I got a letter that I was reappointed to the League of California Cities Revenue and Taxation Committee.
Yay, you like that one.
That's a fun one. And unfortunately Avalon's football lost last Friday to Thatcher. The season's over for them, but they did pretty well.
Yeah, they did great.
Mayor, I'll just interject that I was remiss. I also attended Supervisor Knobby's retirement party on Thursday.
And we would like to say Joseph, once again, did a great job with the Star Spangled Banner at the Vet Service, thank you very much, it was wonderful.
Always honored.
Yeah, you do that tremendously. So Thursday, Thanksgiving Day, does the street sweeper go on that day or is that a day of rest?
I thought holidays, I thought they were exempt from that day.
Does anybody know if it's? They should be running five days a week. They have the town broken down into sections. Annie, I could check on to that. Was it every Thursday you've noticed it not running?
No, 'cause I was just wondering, everybody could get kind of a holiday and not have to move their cars on Thursday and?
Our municipal code doesn't allow for that.
Okay. All right, so everybody move your car on Thursdays.
Just like the trash, they come on holidays too.
Okay, alrighty. Just a couple quick things. Denise, at some point will we get the election results of how Avalon voted on issues?
I hope to get that yes from the county. I know that they told me the first part of December is when the officials, when they'll certify all the results, so at that point I should have them just for Avalon.
People are real curious how Avalon voted, so that's, okay. I had reached out to the city manager and he commented back to all of us about the powers that be that deal with recycling, whether it be CRNR or Levente Catalina Beverage Company, what people's options are in the whole area of recycling, and you know, with the new ban coming in, the plastic bag ban coming in, I'm not, I personally am not sure when that takes effect.
It's taken effect at Vons already.
Really?
Already did.
Next relief it was on the 10th.
Oh, sweet, okay. I haven't been, well, I took my bags, I guess, I didn't notice. But anyway, just get an update, and he said perhaps he'd do something the 1st of January, so, you know, what happens, because the rumors are, everybody's, it's all getting dumped in the dump and it's not being recycled, so I think to kind of appease the community on really how it happens and if there's any money to be made by a private individual with their recyclables, just that kind of thing. So thank you for very good.
And thank Ms. Ratty also, because I know she's gonna help put that, make sure that we bring that forward.
And the, just a question, the Ebus Pebbley Beach Survey, has that gone out to the residents and businesses out of Pebbley yet, do we know?
I don't know, but I will find out and you will have the answer tomorrow, and I'll alert all of you, I apologize, I don't have that.
Okay. Also, we'd like to welcome Captain Federall back. He was, you've been very dearly missed for, probably by your department as well, but we've missed you also. I'm glad you're in good health and try to take it easy. And just one other thing, I read in the paper that, you know, the Santa Catalina Island Company has now, it's offering the water available for the community to go out on Monday through Friday, I think it's 8 to 4, they have somebody there so people can get water, and up to 1,600 gallons, which is an incredible amount of money, or water. So, I don't know what the cities' take is, but we have a cemetery that's in much need of water, and if there's a way that we could make that happen, I know we've had totes up there in the past, and me personally, I would like to see us take advantage of the water to help us, but I don't.
We need a water truck to transport the water.
We can't put it in totes?
What we, if I'm?
Please. Probably be more efficient to have a water truck, but?
Yeah, I think there's really a couple options. First, the Santa Catalina Island Company did offer to provide whatever water we needed for the cemetery in totes. What we're looking at is to logistics of that, if you will, to move from one side to the other, how much person power does it take to do that, as opposed to using an existing sprinkler system that's in there, that's in there checking right now. I did not mention the cemetery, but I'd just say that we are examining what it would take to do the upgrades that are, repair the damage that's been done at the cemetery, and will be, Public Works will be, Mr. Jake will be calculating that. So, our goal has been to make those improvements and we're looking at both options, or number of options, of how to deliver the water product to that site, and we appreciate your support in that regard as well.
Great, thank you. Okay. And just wanted to announce on a separate note, I'll take off my city manager hat, or city manager, city mayor hat. Catalina Kid Ventures will be hosting Breakfast with Santa on December 17th. Keep me from going down there.
Madam Mayor, are you going to say, is Santa going to actually be here?
Santa and Mrs. Claus.
Okay.
They come every year, more than once. Okay, okay, that's all I have. Okay, presentations.
Hey, can I?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. No worries. No, I just wanted to bring up, and I've been bringing it up for, since David's been here for four months, and I brought it up last year again, against contractors' fee and developers' fee. I would like to see us take some kind of direction, maybe put it on?
It's on the next agenda. Yes, yes, it is on the next agenda.
Never mind. But I just want to make sure that we get this, this has been going on and on.
No, well, thank you and?
We've talked about this.
Yes, and thank you very much.
And we're carrying on, right? We want to make sure we get right direction on that, because we're losing out on money with people building and the stuff that's coming out.
And we think the approach would be, without getting into deliberation, but just the approach would be that we need to come up with an interim fee first, and that takes a little work to do some logical estimates, and then we'll do a final and then we'll work with legal team in order to, how to get those in effect immediately for the council, and as immediate as you can do anything in government. But, so, thank you.
So we're clear on that, yes, okay, great. That's it.
Okay. Presentations, we have an update from Southern California Edison on Stage 3. Jeff Lawrence is here.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council and staff. My name is Jeff Lawrence, Senior Project Manager for Southern California Edison, and I'm here to give you an update on our Stage 3 rationing plan and drought mitigation plan as well. As of last Thursday, November 10th, Middle Ranch Reservoir Water Level is at 123 acre feet, and that equates to roughly about 12% of its capacity. Reservoir level has held relatively constant the last few weeks. If you note, the reservoir level was 123, I believe, two weeks ago as well.
Yeah.
So for the month of October, which, since October 6th, we've actually seen the first customer bills come through under the Stage 3 water allotments. We were able to reduce water use over our baseline period by almost 59%. So the community, although problematic and certainly impactful, has responded very well to the increased rationing level, and we want to thank you, the community, for their efforts. We were consistently seeing about a 40% reduction in water use throughout two years of Stage 2, so we've seen an improvement of 18% in the first month of Stage 3 water rationing.
Can you pinpoint any of that directly to any certain camps now not being in operation or could you kind of guess at where the additional reduction is coming?
From what we're seeing, we're seeing relatively consistent water reductions amongst commercial and residential customers. We don't, we haven't pinpointed any anomalies in the data so far. Those substantial water reductions were realized while the visitor counts increased by almost 30% compared to October 2013. So very significant water reductions while we're experiencing significant increases to our visitor counts. To put this in perspective, when we're reducing our water use by 40% during Stage 2, during that two-year timeframe, we're able to conserve about a 15-month supply of water, and that water use would be equivalent to the water we sold in 2014. So if you're looking at the water demand now under Stage 3, probably a two-year supply of water today because of the conservation efforts of the community. So, again, we want to thank all involved with their conservation efforts. Next month will be in our second month of Stage 3, and then we'll show you our year-to-date rationing results for Stage 3. Moving on to the breakdown of customer conservation by customer class, comparing residential and commercial, and this is a comparison against our baseline period, which is June 2012 through May 2013. We still seeing very consistent results from customer, or commercial and residential customer classes. So for the calendar year of 2015, residential and commercial customers were fairly consistent. Residential customers reducing their water use by 43%, commercial customers by 41%. And then we're also tracking conservation efforts on a rolling 12-month period. Residential customers have improved upon the 2015 numbers, reducing water use by 46% compared to the baseline, and our commercial customers are relatively consistent with the 2015 results, at about a 42% reduction in water use. The table and the chart on this slide show you a monthly breakdown of water use from the prior slide I just shared with you. And the results are consistent with what we've seen in prior years. The wintertime demand for commercial and residential customers is relatively equal to one another, and then as demand increases in the spring and summertime, the commercial demand increases at a much higher rate. But for the month of October, residential water use in acre footage was 6.8 acre feet, and for commercial customers is 7.6 acre feet. And this is island-wide for Catalina. The chart that you're looking at here shows you the customers who either received a violation resulting in a flow restrictor or are repeat offenders, already have a flow restrictor device, or two or more violations. The blue line is the customers that received a flow restrictor for the first time, and then the red line are the repeat offenders. 1% of the bills that closed in October resulted in a new flow restrictor being issued, and in terms of repeat offenders, the customers that received that violation was just under 6%. And so, we weren't sure exactly what type of compliance to expect in Stage 3 with the increased rationing. We had established the level of rationing in Avalon at the same level of the results that we're experiencing Stage 2, at about 40%. So at least in the first month, it appears that customers are, for the most part, able to adhere to their Stage 3 allotment. We just saw a slight uptick in recent months of customers that were repeat offenders and fairly consistent with the results that we were experiencing in late 2015, early 2016, about a 5% to 6% rate of customers receiving a second violation or more. In terms of our grant, or, I should, sorry, I should say drought mitigation plan, as we've discussed in prior meetings, DSal Plant Number 2 is in service and operational. Our grant funding efforts, we have three grant opportunities that we're actively pursuing. Two of those grant opportunities, we have submitted applications for, and there may be opportunities to revisit. One of those opportunities that we were not eligible for a grant, based on the income survey, if we're, if Catalina or Avalon were determined to be a disadvantaged community, we might be able to open the door on some of those grant opportunities that we've already applied for. But the number one priority right now is Prop 1, desalination grants. And as of the last update we received, and I believe Scott received as well, we're hopeful that we'll have the preliminary guidelines in December and application window opening sometime in the first quarter or second quarter of next year. We haven't heard any news recently, but we're hopeful that that's still the plan. We have a desalination expert that is underway with a study for a DSal upgrade project, if you will, that would be the scope of work for a grant application for DSal. And our specialist is on schedule, and we should have those results in middle of December.
What's his name?
And then there's a number of additional projects that were, are in various stages of research and execution. The new effort here is the Bottom Bull Point in red. In late November, early December, we'll be conducting pump tests at a well in Middle Ranch. It's a test well that's been installed since about 2004, 2005. We'll be conducting those pump tests to determine what the water quality and the possible volume of water is as a possible mitigation during the current drought that we're experiencing. So we hope to have some results sometime after the 1st of the year on those pump tests.
How deep is that well?
It's about 350 feet deep.
Okay, so it's not a bedrock well then?
It is in the bedrock.
It is a bedrock well?
Yeah.
I thought the Conservancy had shut that project down because the effect on Lower Bend-Westin Canyon, no?
So, at this point in time, we just have approval from the Conservancy to conduct the pump test and nothing beyond that. So then, once we have the results of that pump test, we would need to then reengage with the Conservancy.
Is this just for this water going straight into the system? It's not gonna be divided like 50% to the island company, is it? Is that?
No, this is something that Southern California Edison is pursuing.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, great.
So as I mentioned before, there were several grant opportunities that are in-flight. The state revolving fund application is the one that we are ineligible for, but we can revisit now that, based on the results of the income survey, to see if we might now be eligible. The US Borough Reclamation is still under review. We're still waiting the response for that application. And then I mentioned the one that's in execution, which is the Department of Water Resources' Desalination Grant, Round 4. There are another, a number of other grant opportunities that we're monitoring. The new updates are in red, the last three rows on this chart. Through the city's membership and the IRWM, there may be opportunities now with Proposition 1, Integrated Regional Water Management for Disadvantaged Communities. So I believe the city is still an active member of the IRWM, and we just await the opportunity to partner with the city to see what opportunities may be there for, opportunities for Avalon and the water utility. And then there's two new opportunities that we're researching. We were just made aware of the guidelines recently, and that's through the US Bureau of Reclamation. The first grant is a drought contingency planning grant, where there may be a matching requirement that can be waived if Avalon is accepted as a disadvantaged community. And then the second grant is a drought resiliency project for 2017. So I don't have a lot of information on that yet. We just, again, became aware of the guidelines, and our team is researching those. And that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have.
Thank you, Jeff. Questions, anyone? Maybe there are none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Oral communications. This is an opportunity for people in the community to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You are limited to three minutes, and no action will be taken.
Good evening. Cam Albers, 217 Cali-Dosso. First, I'd like to start with the election and extend a big thank you to Denise Ratty who came down and helped us, because it was the first time I had ever worked the election. It's like, I kept saying to myself, is this 2016? Because it's all paper. It's the most Luddite approach to it, you can believe. But I do think it would be important for the city to work with the county to make some changes that appear to be related to the fact that we get our mail through the post office, because just at my little precinct, we had about 50 people who were listed as having received a vote-by-mail ballot, but they had never received it. And when that happens, then you have to have them fill out a provisional ballot application, and it's just another barrier to exercising your voting rights. And I think that if we could work with the county to figure out where the problem is, the disconnect, which I'm sure is because of the post office box requirement, it would make things go much better for our citizens, and they could exercise their right to vote. But thank you very much, Denise. The other thing I did want to talk about is there was some discussion, Councilman Sampson brought up this, the floor with the water rationing, and there was some comment by someone on the City Council, and I tried to go through the tape, and I couldn't find it, to the extent that everybody was able to take advantage of the new floor, which is not true. I'm going to pass around mine.
So I was somebody who started conserving too early, and for that reason, I am taking the brunt of--
I have months where I have 16 gallons, 19 gallons, and it's because I used much less water in 2012, the baseline year. And it seems to me that if we're going to be looking at the tariffs and ways to do it in a more friendly and equitable way, I would ask that the people that are talking with the PC consider that the floor is the floor, and that anybody that's under the floor would automatically be raised. If we're going to recognize that there is water available, that that would go a long way toward helping those of us that have already really been doing our part and more.
Did you by chance, did you talk to Edison about it or file a variance in any way?
And part of it is, I don't want to go through the variance process. I mean, to me, it's a principle thing that I don't need to explain. If they've already determined the 33 gallons is the floor, then I should be entitled to take advantage of that without giving away water that I have in, you know, another month. I have one month in May where it's, like, that's when I invite people over. So I don't want them to take that water and spread it over the year, and I don't think that I should have to. If the floor is the floor, then it should be the floor for everyone.
And not to be included in your three minutes, because I don't want to take away from that, but this brings up the question that's been asked by a multitude of persons in the community, and this is why we keep talking about it. My question would then be to Edison, which you don't need to stand up right now and answer this, but I believe this is a computer-driven document that basically is just data crunching. I don't think there's any human eyes that are really looking at this. And so I was under the impression that that's where the variance or the request to look into my particular account for each of the persons who are less than that floor comes into play, because I don't think that there's an individual person that could pull this and say, oh, this person's under this. And I don't know--
No, but the way they set up their Excel spreadsheet was if you were already under 33, they just told you to leave you where you are. If you had zero for that month, then they went back and they just made some assumptions, like I know somebody who's a single person, but they gave them 60 gallons for that month. So there's, you know, and I appreciate that it's probably difficult to parse through everybody, but I do think that there's some basic understanding that every human being needs a certain amount of water, and everybody should be entitled to that. And why should I be at 16 when other people have been given the 33? I mean, you were in that situation too in a couple of months. And if we're looking at the fact that we believe we have some more water available now, then it should be given out equitably. And I just think that a floor should be a floor for everyone. And I think that's all I had. Wow. Thanks.
Thank you, Pat.
Ralph Morrow, 222 MetroPole. I want to start out by thanking the city for what they did at the Veterans Park. It was outstanding. Dan and the city staff did a great, great job. I was really, all of us were really happy to see how well it went. And Joe, of course, did his normal thing and sang the Star Spangled Banner, did well. Everybody loved it. Good job again. I'm also here to talk a little bit about water. I've been studying water for about 20 years, and I thought I might throw a couple of things out there. We, the issue that's before us now is Edison. They're finally doing what they need to do. Basically, the D-SAL system should look like three units, D-SAL units, three wells. And the wells, of course, are a mile away from the D-SAL units. So they need to dig that ditch up again and get it back. Then we need to put maybe about a million-gallon tank up there at Falls Canyon. And by doing that, it would make Avalon totally independent from the reservoir, got your own thing. And when it rains, if it ever rains again, then we can, we could shut those down and then feed off the reservoir. But that way, we won't have any problems, and we won't have any phone calls like I had the other day. A friend of mine in Monterey called me up and said, I just read a story in a newspaper that said the people of Avalon are washing their cars with Sparklet's water. Now, that, you know, that's sort of funny, but it's not funny, because what that's going to do is when that word gets out and around to people that have a habit of traveling and going on vacation, they might think twice about coming over here, and that could affect our economy big time. And I really and truly feel that what needs to be done on the D-SAL unit system can be done in this wintertime. It can be done. And if people, you know, put their backs to it. The other thing that I want to talk about is this water reclamation that we talked, that we started out with the RTAP group, and there were some issues that were talked about, and one of them was cross-connections, you know? Get one, if you've got two different kinds of water going to a house, if you get the connections crossed, instead of drinking potable water, you're drinking something else. We had that issue about 10 years ago, and our argument was that the, if there's a cross-contamination today, we got salt water in one and potable water in the other side. And if they're crossed, you'll know it, because you'll be drinking salt water. And they seem to understand that, and we said, the system right now works. So if we just take the water, the salt water out, and by the way, salt water has got to go. It does a lot of nasty things. And, but, so, one of the things that the salt water does is it takes the water, the wastewater treatment plant, and it cuts the life of the plant in half when it has to deal with salt water. And so it costs maybe $20 million to build a wastewater treatment plant, and it's supposed to be good for 50 years. With salt water, it's maybe good for 20. And so that's not good.
Ralph, Ralph, I, this is Annie speaking. This is your conscience speaking. As you know, we limit this part of the discussion to three minutes, and you have gone for six, and we respect everything you have to say. And I believe that the council feels the way that you do on the reclamation and some of the solutions to the salt water issue. Correct me if I'm wrong, folks.
Exactly.
So I don't want to belabor the issue, and we do respect your input and your input on the RTAP, but I think I have to keep the meeting going on.
Got it. Got it. So there's a, there's a guy in Monterey that can help the city. He ran the wastewater treatment plant for eight or nine years. Might be a guy that you might be able to bring down here, and he might help you a little bit.
And he has come before to visit with you--
Sonny Von.
Yes.
He's the one.
Yes.
Who is it?
And he can help.
Yeah.
He was here when they made the decision to put the D-SAL plant on Edison or the city, and they made the decision to go to Edison. Okay? So he's been here that long. He did a great job, and is somebody that you might want to talk to.
Maybe have him reach out to our city manager. That would be great. Thank you for that input.
Thank you, Ralph.
Thanks.
Excellent.
Other oral communication?
I'll give a quick update here. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Exciting time for the Community Service Department. Three projects underway. Unfortunately, Joe must shot a field. We're not going to see our team compete in a playoff game, but what we had asked they consider is that we do an alumni game up there. We're looking to kick off the field with a celebration, December 10th and 11th. After a couple of high school soccer games, possibly that Saturday, we've asked the football, current football team to be able to get up there and play versus alumni flag football just in fun. We're going to do some punt pass, kick competition for the kids prior to it, and then roll into Sunday with some soccer and some baseball, just youth competitions, just to do a kind of a family-friendly event for kickoff there. Across the street, Avalon Fit Trail is moving along. We're probably two weeks away before we see fitness equipment in the ground, and the community starts to use that, so we're excited about that. Mole Park, as you have been down to, excuse me, Knobby Park, soon to be Knobby Park with official signage. Construction has started there. Demo is taking place. We'll see the Knobby, SS Knobby on our shores here in the next couple of weeks. It's soon to arrive and be unveiled there at the park with mid-December kickoff for that. And really pleased to announce that we opened up the teen center this past weekend. We kicked it off on Friday night. We had about 50 teens out there playing pool and dancing and music and ping pong and foosball, and we did a barbecue forum. We had them back on Saturday under their regular operation, and we had about 20 kids come up for that. So it was the first weekend of the teen center and the reopening of that. And then tomorrow, we're taking 12, 15 seniors up to Airport in the Sky for lunch and a tour of the control tower and excursion for them. So exciting times for the Community Service Department.
Great. Thank you.
Awesome job.
Yes.
Thank you.
Other announcements? Okay, consent calendar.
You know, can I, can I say something really quick? It's just something that piggybacks onto what Ralph was saying. I think we're getting, he mentioned something about publicity and news stories, and I think we talked about this before. We've got to kind of rein in how news stories go from where we can, at least. And I know we're not taking any action on anything that was said in the announcements, but I just want to make that clear that, yeah, I think we need to have somebody in charge of public relations, that anything that's coming from this dais and from our staff needs to be something that's positive and it's inviting. And I know it's been that way, but I've seen some news stories too that just have gone out in a direction that might just curtail people from coming over. And we got to let people know that they're invited here, and we have enough water for them. It's just, everybody's just got to take a little bit less than they, that they're used to. And I think it's a good thing for everybody anyways, because all of California is like this. So it's a good point that Ralph brought up.
I think the difference is that we have a solution to the water situation unlike other parts of California.
Right.
And it's just aligning ourselves with, so that we're on the same page about the solution and about getting it sooner. I tell people, when they say we might sell our house because of the water, I say, we have plenty of water. It's just, it's just that we need storage. And so I think your point about being positive, there is a positive story here.
Yeah, let's keep that going. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Consent calendar.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. On number one is actions approval, to approve actions from the November 1st regular meeting. I should note that on the agenda report, it should say November 1st, you're approving the minutes for that meeting, and that staff report is amended. Thank you, Ms. Ratty. Warrants, disbursements from October 12th to November 9th totaling, I have to put on my readers, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Totalling $890,201.25 to payrolls totaling $447,904.09, and four electronic funds transfers totaling $147,963.01. Recommended action is to approve the total disbursements totaling $1,486,068.35. There's a resolution authorizing an alternate director to the Public Agency Risk Sharing Authority, California Board of Directors, and California Transit Systems Joint Powers Authority. It's recommended that you approve the two resolutions, authorizing the Chief Administrative Officer City Clerk to serve as the alternate on the director on the ParsAC, excuse me, the Public Agency Risk Sharing Authority of California ParsAC, Board of Directors, and the California Transit Systems Joint Powers Authority, CALTI. Contract with HDR to conduct a sewer, saltwater, and solid waste cost of service study. Contract with HDR to conduct a sewer, salt water, and solid waste cost of service study. The recommended action is determine the cost of service study can be procured more economically without a formal request for proposals. Professional services do not have to be bid. Authorize the city manager to contract with HDR Engineering to conduct a sewer, salt water, and solid waste cost of service study for the city of Avalon for a cost not to exceed $34,850, and authorize the city manager to approve up to an additional $5,000 or 15% unforeseen expenses. What this will do is essentially, it'll make sure that the distribution of costs that were raised is done appropriately. Number five is to adopt a resolution approving a new grant of $80,000 allocated to park improvements at Joe Machado Field from the Los Angeles County Regional Park and Open Space District, and adoption of a city of Avalon's youth employment plan. And that recommendation is to approve the $80,000 for additional park enhancements and adopt the Avalon's youth employment plan as it relates to grant funds, and authorize the mayor to sign same. This is also, number six is a funding agreement with the county for desalinization plan. The recommended action is to approve the, and authorize the city manager to execute a funding agreement with the county of Los Angeles for county's funding of up to additional $500,000 for construction costs related to the Catalina Water Desalinization Plan Number Two. Item number seven is approval of recognition event expenses for supervisors Kenaby. The recommended action is to ratify action by staff to expend these monies and approve expenditures in the amount of $11,735.80 in recognition of services rendered to Supervisor Don Kenaby. And I should note, Mayor, the staff report, we could have easily put on one side the cost of this recognition that he so deservedly and you gave to him. The other side, a rough estimate is about $17,900,000 that LA County, with the assistance of Supervisor Kenaby, has provided. And we think that's actually low, and it's illustrated by this timeline that was done through Ms. Ratty and Jen Monroe's office.
I just have a quick question. I wasn't going to pull any items. Scott, you might be able to answer this. On item number four, the contract with HDR, would we be required to go out to RFP for a contract of this size?
No, because it's professional services, and so, your municipal code is silent on professional services, but we've adopted language for purchasing equipment to satisfy the requirement of the municipal code.
Okay.
I have a question on number five. I was wondering if that grant includes trees and shrubs and landscaping. I don't see that, anything on there. Would you know by any chance, Dan? Because I know, remember, we were talking about getting some trees up there, Orde's Tree, the family tree, and shade trees, things like that?
At this point, the $80,000 was part of a larger $284,000 grant. Some of that money was dispersed back towards the Mole Park, the shortfall there, and then money for Peoples Park and some additional improvements there. But because those grants are already in place, those were amended. So, the $80,000 did not include trees and irrigation, those types of things. We felt with, you know, kind of this time, that wouldn't have been prudent because of the drought and the rashings that we've got right now.
Got it. Understand. That's good thinking. Okay. Thank you.
And then I have a question on item six. The county of Los Angeles, through the work of Supervisor Don Kenaby, would like to contribute another $500,000 towards the project.
We contributed $500,000. The city did. The county wants to contribute another $500,000 to make a total of $1 million.
I mean, we always knew there was $500, but we said another.
Oh, I had that confusion, too, but it is the original $500.
Right. Okay. All righty. So, council, what is your pleasure on item, on the consent calendar?
Make a motion to approve items one through seven on the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Discussion? Call for the vote?
All ayes.
Item number eight, general business.
Well, I'll start, and I know that you may have questions. This is a matter that's returning to the city council based on earlier conversation. It's an e-bus charging infrastructure concrete slab installation. At your meeting of the fourth, the council directed staff to bid a permanent hard surface installation for e-buses, charging station, for e-buses. Advertisements for bids were published on October 7. The city received two proposals that were well above what we expected them to be, $32,538,900. Excuse me. The state law allows the city to do the work itself. If you by a four-fifths vote, direct based upon the bids, the high bids, if you direct the staff to do it, you would need to, A, take the following action. One, to allow staff to schedule a public works crew to proceed in installing a concrete slab at the current e-bus charging facility pad. And two, adopt a resolution authorizing the staff to proceed with improvements. And as noted, a four-fifths vote of the council in favor of allowing staff to do the work is necessary. Mr. Jake may have questions. If he has questions, he can certainly answer.
I have no questions.
Good evening.
I have a couple. Really just looking for a further explanation, so I'll just ask my three points, and if you could just respond to those. Not necessarily that I'm opposed to this project, but just for some clarification, that I've been able to answer some questions, so I'm looking for you to educate me on this and then, at the same time, for the public. With regards to the concrete or asphalt for this area for repairs for the e-buses, could you help understand why the repairs can't be done up at the city warehouse, similar to how, or if that's where we're doing the fire, like fire truck repairs and other vehicle repairs?
The space is limited up there. A flat area is really not available up there. When need be, of course, the mechanics can jack them up and things like that. And if, in fact, the e-bus did lose its charge down here, if it malfunctioned here, it would have to be repaired here. And since the charges are in place here, and it seems like this would be the logical place to have a good working area.
And I did get stopped up on that, so let me clarify. Originally, when we were talking about this a year or so ago, that was going to be a temporary location, but we've since decided that that is going to be the permanent location of the buses and the charging station.
That's correct. My first direction was to make it temporary.
And then expenditures, do we have any idea expenditures to date on the implementation of the whole charging e-bus?
Approximately, I believe it's $34,000, something to that effect. That includes design, plans, specs, Edison fees, electrical engineering design.
So, it was about where, it seems like it was about where we originally thought that it was for the total expenses of it.
I'm going off of memory.
But ultimately, wouldn't we be saving money by leaving it in its location rather than moving it up to the warehouse?
If, we're talking probably two different things. The charging station should stay here because we have a lot invested in it. When you say moving it, if we move the repairs up there, that's fine, but when we do receive a rain, we're going to be shut down over here. The DG we put in is going to hold it better than dirt, but substantial rain is not, the DG is going to soak it in, and the buses will not be able to get in and out to get charged. So, a hard surface needs to be put there, or move the chargers out, which is going to be, it costs a lot more money.
Right.
You need a hard surface there.
Okay. And then, just the last question specific for tonight's recommended action. Was this a budgeted expense, or, and if it's not a budgeted expense, where will it come from in the budget?
We have money in the maintenance and repair building and grounds account. It's $105,75,570.
So, does that mean another project isn't going to get done?
I don't believe a certain project was earmarked. I think just a sum was noted there.
So, okay. I just want to make sure we weren't going to stop another project from happening.
I understand. Yes.
So, let me clarify something. If we were to move this operation up to the city warehouse, we'd have to build a whole nother slab there, right? We'd probably have to do some demo work, some grading, correct?
Yes, correct.
So, and there's really not a lot of, I think we found some space right behind the ballpark, but that means we'd have to possibly get into the city warehouse and...
I don't know if you've seen it, but I'm parking backhoes, trucks, everything else, and a new cemetery. We don't have the room down at the public works. We don't have a room.
Because I was a proponent of that. I mean, that's my dog park, and that's my community garden out there. See ya. I mean, we still need to think about that because people wanted that. And so, that breaks my heart that we're doing this, but at the same time, I was a proponent of the electric buses. You raised a good point. I wanted to ask staff, what does it cost to charge those electric buses per month? So, if we could look into the electrical bills, because I had some constituents ask, what do those buses charge, cost to charge? I mean, it's got to be astronomical, but, you know...
That info should be readily available.
Really?
It's own meter, and I believe Ondra is, we're monitoring that, and I'm not so sure...
This is another one of those painful things that, you know, we're sacrificing for an environmentally friendly community. I mean, at least it cuts down on smog and noise pollution in town, and then we have high efficiency, low emissions diesel generators out at Edison, and I know that's the way those things function. So, I think we're doing a good thing. It's just, it's tough. Can I ask you a question about this project? So, we're going to build this slab now, and this doesn't include the facility, right? I mean, we're, at a later time, we're going to have to come back and build some kind of a...
If you want it to be enclosed, yes.
Enclosed? I think it's going to, it's kind of inevitable. I think we need to think in that direction because we have to have that kind of foresight because we can't expect our mechanics to work on the buses in the rain. And when that time comes, we'll jump off that bridge when we get there, but...
If I may, Madam Mayor, and I think it was the suggestion of our mechanics that we go with concrete there for ease of work and for a solid surface. So, we're following their advice as well in regard to this, into this location. And as you say, to move those now utilities, those charging stations that were just installed, would be another cost, an added cost, so...
Well, and there was no grid up by the city warehouse either that would be easily tapped into by Edison as well. So, it would have just been an astronomical cost to move it up there to the city warehouse, but I know we hashed this out before.
And the difference is that you own this property. This is your property, the city's, the people's property, so you're making improvement to your, the city-owned property.
Well, we need to consolidate our assets as well. I mean, everybody else in this town is doing it, so I don't see why we, we're doing a good thing by doing this. We're finding spaces where we didn't think we had them, and it's making us think a little bit outside the box and a little more effectively and efficiently, so. So, you're actually, by the city crew performing this work, we're going to be saving some money and...
Yes, considerable.
And I know we got a really, really good city crew working right now, and they've been doing a lot of concrete work lately, so...
Yep. And then we're going to train some people, and a lot of people are going to get some good experience in laying concrete. We do have one logistical problem. We're going to have to take one of the chargers up the hill because, as you know, the concrete needs to cure. And so, we're going to ask the Avalon Transit to work with us and charge up the hill like we did prior while the concrete is curing and we're pouring it. So, that'll all be worked out. It shouldn't be more than eight to 10 days that there'll be inconvenience, but we're going to work that out with them.
Okay.
And, yes, sir.
On the chargers?
Yes.
Is there any way we could build a temporary fence around those things right now with the kids and all the activity back there that's pretty high voltage not to be secured up in some way in case somebody playing back there? I mean, we kind of, I know when we do, if we pass this and do new pour, we're going to have to go around that, right? We're going to have to go exceed on the other side of those, right?
If we do put in a new building, my plan was to go, to have the chargers inside the building.
Correct. Okay, correct. But for the time being, I'd like to see if we can get some kind of temporary thing around that.
We could certainly do it. The problem is lifting the cord over the fence. I've got to figure out how we can do that, but I'm sure something can be done.
I appreciate that because I see a lot of kids going, a lot of foot traffic right behind here.
Yeah.
And a lot of kids, and if we could do that for the safety reasons, I would appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Would it be easier to fence around the whole doggone thing?
The gate, open, close it. It'd be easier to put just a little temporary fence inside of it and then just pull it out because you're going to have to pull it out anyway.
And that's expensive, too.
Anyway.
You're welcome.
Okay, council. Is there a motion on item number eight? And this does take a four-fifths vote.
Moved to adopt the resolution authorizing staff to proceed with the improvements.
Is there a second?
I'm checking that.
Comments? Call for the vote?
All ayes.
Hi, item...
Four-fifths.
Item nine.
Madam Mayor, I've asked the Director of Planning to handle the report, except to say that it's an ordinance to adopt changes to Title IX of the Avalon Municipal Code to authorize administrative approval of minor, underlying minor renovation projects.
This is a change that we are requesting or asking to make to the municipal code. For years, the planning department has had a policy whereby we would approve very minor projects that required some level of planning commission approval, we would approve them administratively. These were projects that did not add bedrooms or kitchens, they did not expand the footprint of the structure into the setbacks. They were projects that did not require variances or conditional use permits, and we had operated under this policy for quite a few years. Projects approved through this process were, the permits were reviewed by myself, the fire chief, and the planning chairman or vice chairman would sign off on these projects. The city attorney advised us that we really needed to incorporate this process into the municipal code and it be part of our code and not just a policy. So, we, with their assistance, wrote the language that mimics how that policy and permit process worked. We added a couple of additional items relating to temporary land uses. We had not ever had anything like that in our code that would allow for a temporary use. And so, we're asking that you approve this so that we can move this policy into law. And if you have any questions for me?
Questions? Questions?
Are we still doing many permits?
That's what this is, this is what this used to be, was called a many permit. Correct.
Right. Make sure, right?
Yes, this formalizes that process.
Formalizes the many permits, structures, the many permits.
Yes.
Process.
And this is something that is still, the building official would still go out to make sure that they're in compliance with their little...
Well, this is, it's a planning approval, so, but it creates a very minor project. So, these projects typically will always still require a building permit, so the building official, of course, would still be required in that capacity.
And go out there and check it out.
Correct. Correct.
Okay. Comments from the community? Motion by council?
Moved to introduce in lieu of all further readings of an ordinance amending Section 9-8.204 of the Avalon Municipal Code in its entirety to allow administrative approvals of minor renovation projects and amend Section 9-3.613 to add the definition of minor renovations.
Is there a second?
A second.
No further comment? Call for the vote?
All ayes. All eyes.
Item number 10.
Mayor and counsel, this item is coming back. It has been on your agenda previously, and I will ask the harbor master and director of finance as needed to get in the detailed report. Let me just say that this is shoreboat service review in action. Island Enterprises, formerly known as Island Navigation, has been providing shoreboat service to the city for many years, and the, in 1977, the city granted Island Navigation an exclusive franchise agreement for providing shoreboat service in city waters. That agreement has since expired. We did receive communication from Mr. Stickler, who indicated that there is a meeting tomorrow at the county. It was previously scheduled and changed dates, but, and between county and metro regarding funding, we are not, as a city, involved in that discussion, but he mentions that, that there is a meeting tomorrow. He is seeking additional funding to operate the service from the county, as is, as is his right to do. You also received communication from the harbor master that indicates that there is a provider of service who is interested should you choose to go out to RFP. And harbor master, with your permission, Madam Mayor, or the director of finance, whoever...
So, does anybody have any questions on...
Well, I have a question. When, when you had said that Island Navigation or Island Enterprises was going to be working with Metro, why would not we be the lead on that instead of a private purveyor?
I mean, why would they want to talk to, because what if he doesn't have the, can anybody respond to that?
Don's office is talking to Metro to see if we're available to apply for any funds. So, we would be the lead agency, but we're just trying to find out if there's any funds available for Metro.
But we allowed them to go on their own?
No, we asked Don's office, Connie, to check with Metro and see if there's any funds available. We asked Don about this.
Is that so? We don't have...
He's not applying for it. We will, if there's money available, we'll be the applying agency.
But why shouldn't we have been the inquiring agency?
We were the inquiring agency.
But we're sending a private individual to discuss it?
No, we're not sending a private, the discussion tomorrow is between Metro and Don's office.
And Island Enterprises?
No.
Oh, I thought I heard that they were having a meeting with them by one of the people from that agency.
That's the way that the email read.
That was my understanding. They were meeting.
They're not meeting.
My understanding is, is what the mayor proclaimed, that, that there, there is a meeting between Metro and the county in regard to whether or not there are funds available to subsidize a shore service, and so, that...
Brian, can you shed any light on this conversation?
I thought Mr. Stickler was meeting with Metro. I'm not involved or privy to the information. Maybe Bob can shed some light.
No.
No light or, or no?
No, I don't have any other information.
Okay, thank you.
But there is somebody else interested in taking an RFP on it, correct?
I just yesterday received information from someone who's interested in applying for the, or responding to an RFP if it goes out.
Okay.
And just some background on it, back in July of 2015, Island Enterprises delivered a letter to the city manager stating that they'll no longer be able to provide harbor shoreboat services at its current hours and levels of service due to a $600,000 shortfall. In November of 2015, they stopped running between Monday at noon until Friday at four o'clock, and the harbor patrol's been transporting people in those times. I feel the shoreboat service is an integral part of Avalon Harbor and a vile necessity to vessels who are visiting Avalon, and their passengers need to get ashore to support the attractions, hotels, restaurants, and alike. If a shoreboat service did not exist, visitors would need to bring a dinghy with them to get ashore, and always, that's not always practical or affordable. In addition, the existing dinghy docks are overcrowded, which would limit accessibility to our visitors. And then, fast forward to March of 2016, the city issued an RFP without offering any type of subsidy, and only Island Enterprises responded with a proposal that reiterated the need of a $573,000 subsidy. Staff can't justify the dramatic rise in the cost of service projected by the contractor. Staff has analyzed the Island Enterprises' projections and believe that it's the $573,000 shortfall includes about $342,000 of over-allocated expenses from their operations, leaving a more realistic shortfall of about $231,000. The finance director and the harbor master estimated $250,000 as a fair charge to the city pay if the shoreboat service was provided by contract, and we came up with that figure by figuring out what it would cost to, for us to run, plus adding in expenses that we wouldn't have that the contractor would. The most significant challenge would be the acquisition of three vessels to run the service. Island Enterprises had offered us to sell three of their boats that were built in 1967, 1969, and 1970 for $190,000 each, and I just don't think that would be a wise thing to buy a 50-year-old boat for that kind of money. We're asking that you authorize this, the city manager either to go out for an RFP, a second RFP, and offering up to a $250,000 subsidy to operate a year-round shoreboat service. And if you don't want to go out to RFP, then we'd like you to direct the city manager and the harbor master to pursue a city-owned operation and authorize the expenditure of $600,000 to $800,000 for three boats.
Thank you, Brian. I'm sure we're going to have questions. Mayor Protem, did you have a comment or question?
In light of the meeting that's going to take place tomorrow, I would, I think we should go out for a RFP, but I'm not sure what the maximum subsidy should be because we don't know what the county's going to say. So, I think we should authorize the RFP tonight and have them plug the number in after the meeting with Metro and County takes place.
Do we, do we know the, what the potential income is for this business? Has it been legitimately audited so you can actually figure out what the business makes and what the, because we can figure out the expenses pretty much, but what does it make so we know what we're getting into? I mean, you'll...
Hi, sorry, Yoli Montano. I, I believe that you should get another, an RFP. I believe that the city, when I see you doing leases and your tenants, that you allow a few of them to shut down two to three months a year, and, you know, we've been trying so hard to get this town year-round. I have tenants at the marketplace that they do not shut down, you know, because we can't shut down, and the harbor does need help in the winter time because we don't have a winter anymore. We don't have weather. It's been hot, so when we have this heat, there's tons of boats in the harbor, and they need to be serviced as, as a city. We need to service them, and we cannot base any of our, our voting and our decisions on anybody's financial hardship. We can't. So, we just need to do what's best for, for the town, and, I mean, I would love to shut down during the months, but we can't. We have to keep going, and I think that it's a good idea to get another, an RFP.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
The, the, I'm hearing what you're saying, Yoli. I guess, you know, this $250,000 has been, you know, just thrown out there, and when we were discussing, I was discussing with city manager, to say, I mean, I think the competition is when you say up to $250,000, because if somebody says, "I only need a $50,000 subsidy," well, that sounds, sounding a little more attractive. I don't know what other apples and oranges you, you really need to compare. I mean, in the RFP, are you going, we going to be saying it needs to be from whatever it is, seven to 12 or whatever the hours are, or can people, is that negotiable as well? How do, how specific do you think the RFP will be? Or does somebody, if I say I need, I want four boats, and Cindy says, "But I only need two boats to do the operation," how do we, how critically do we look at that?
We look at everything that someone has to offer and then make a decision off it. Our last RFP is 27 pages long, and it explains in there what we were requesting. So, I mean, we can fine-tune it before it goes out again.
I mean, 27 pages?
Mm-hmm.
That was a lot.
I know, but I guess I didn't read every detail. I would, I mean, yes, they need insurance, and yes, they need whatever, but, okay, if that's what it takes. And how, for example, in, do they have to prepare a budget for us in there to show us what their budget is and show us what percentage of their cost is administrative and justify their administrative costs in that budget? Is that in there, Mr. Messer?
I'd have to go over that with Bob, but I believe the last RFP required that.
That, it can get that specific. What, did you go yes or...
Yeah, that's what, that's what they responded last time. But with, last time, there was no competition. This time, with competition.
Right, okay.
I mean, I've got to say that Mr. Stickler runs a very good operation. He's got very nice equipment, and I have the highest regard for him, but I, we can't afford a $573,000 subsidy. So, I mean, we've got to do something so we can stay in business.
Right.
Without dredging up the can of worms that was buried about six months ago, if, when did the franchise agreement expire?
I believe it's like 2012 or so.
And that's the expiration of that franchise agreement? Was that the catalyst for there being another?
No.
For the availability of another shoreboat service in town?
It's when the, the, they lost their, their contract with Carnival Cruise Lines for doing the tendering operations, he was subsidizing the shoreboat operation through their tendering operation.
Right, but where I'm confused is if they had a franchise agreement, how could they have lost a contract if they had a franchise agreement?
Because the cruise ships outside the city limit. Well, there was an argument, there was an, yes. I think it's an argument.
Now, are the agreement, the franchise agreement that we had with them gave them an exclusive right to, to take the ships in from the cruise lines. That expired. After that expired, Carnival came in and they wanted to bring a second boat, and Carnival as a condition to that said, "We're not going to pay this. If you want a second boat, we're going to, we're going to have our own tenders, and we're going to run our business, and we're not going to use your, your shoreboats." And so, they lost, not only did the franchise agreement, but it brought in a second boat.
Was there, this was prior to, to this seated counsel, was there any negotiation to extend that franchise agreement?
Oh, there was, yes. Extensive negotiations. Yeah, they had an agreement ready to go, and they didn't sign it.
It was drafted and...
Yeah, it was drafted and ready to go. It was on their desk. They didn't sign it.
Who didn't sign it?
They didn't.
Oh.
I mean, I remember seeing this copy from BBK. I mean, the red line kept going back and forth between the two attorneys, between BBK and Island Enterprises.
Action, counsel?
I'd like to move to direct the city manager and harbor master to issue a second request for proposals offering up to a blank subsidy, offering up to, to operate a year-round shoreboat service.
So, you want to leave the $250,000 out and then fit it in once, if, if we hear anything from them?
We find out what the number is.
Okay, but, but, okay, but wait a minute.
What if there is no number?
Let's back up because we had said, okay, we need to think about this, because we had said, okay, one of the reasons we increased, well, we didn't really say this, but our, our harbor fees were increased a little bit, and the rumor's out on the street that that was to pay $250,000 for a subsidy. Right, wrong, or indifferent, that's how it's perceived in the community. So, let's say they go, you're giving me a funny look, but that's, but that was kind of that, that, when he figured out, when they figured out the harbor fee increases to make that 250, that's because we were thinking we may have to pay up to $250,000 for a subsidy. Correct? Okay. So, now, we're saying, okay, we've created, we've, we're going to collect $250,000, and let's say he comes, somebody comes back from MTA and says, "Oh, they give us $300,000." Now, are we going to say, well, now we have $550,000 for a subsidy? I would hope not.
I just wanted to clarify on the raised mooring fees, that that took in consideration the entire budget of the harbor, the, the additional salaries and wages, et cetera, and, and the overall picture, and the mooring fees hadn't been raised for a while, and it was to pay for those additional fees in addition to potentially additional costs for shoreboat.
No, and I hear what you're saying, Bob. Thank you.
But I think, I think what happens is, is we put the RFP out with the number of whatever the number turns out to be. Neither do I. Good old Siri. We let, we let, let the respondents create a service to the particular level.
We need a timeout.
So, what just happened is Yoli asked a question and was commenting, and his phone, Siri, said, "I'm not sure I understand." So, that's what we heard up here, so that's why everybody was laughing.
She gets along with me as well as I do.
Say, you got to say that again. I wasn't listening.
We put an RFP out with the number of subsidy up to whatever number it is, whatever the number can be, and we have the people respond to it, and we judge the RFP based upon what's level of service. If someone comes up with $50,000 more, good. If there's no money out there, good. I mean, we know there's about 250 that we can throw into it. That's, that's the floor, and let's see what response is. And now that we have competition, it might be even better for us.
Like I say, I'm afraid it's going to go the opposite way.
Madam Mayor, I would suggest if you do, if you do that, that you might want to consider putting a cap on what city funds are allocated based on up to, because it could be that money is provided in one year by Metro or county that may not be available in subsequent years, and so, if you're, if you're comfortable with that, that would, that would lock or put a ceiling, if you will, on the amount that the city, you could always in the future, if you thought it was appropriate, you could renegotiate, but that, but that's just a thought if you wanted to do that. So, you would, so, so, so the city, the city amount would be up to the amount that the finance director and the harbor master has said they believe is, is a fair. If there were more money than you could, we would advertise per Mayor Protem's motion or idea that we would advertise up to X, whatever X is above 250, but, but you might want to stick cap the amount, and that could be part of actually any agreement that you made later, should...
Again, I just think we're getting into the subsidy game, and I'm a little nervous that, that if, even the 250 is, is, makes me nervous because that we have $250,000, because as Mr. Messer just said, that takes into account increased wages and whatever. So, we're talking out of both sides of our mouth. We either have $250,000, or we don't.
What, what the concern, I think, might be in part is this, I'm very concerned about us going into that business with what we are told would be about an $800,000, six to $800,000 investment, and, and then an ongoing operation that we would have to run, but I understand your caution, but from our, I, I, it would be preferable if you can find a satisfactory deliverer of that service on the private side, that we don't have to do that ourselves, but, but again, that's left to you to make that decision.
Well, let me ask another question. If in the RFP, maybe there is a subsidy of, of so much, but would it have to be that it's all received in one year? I mean, I don't know if you work that in the RFP, or that comes from the applicants to say...
The deal is whatever you make, what you're looking for, I think, is, is, is the provider to give you the best deal for the dollar, and then the, the, the RFP will outline parameters for that, which would then, if successful, would be that, the point for a negotiated agreement that the city attorney would prepare. In general, though, the RFP should set the general terms of what would be expected of the provider and what we would do and what they would do. Is that, is that a fair, is that a fair, do you think, Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, I mean, that's why it was 27 pages. It's been put... It put basically, it put, you know.
Oh, BBK did this, right?
I don't think.
No, actually, we, yeah, we took one and then we sent it to Parsak and then it doubled.
Okay, perfect. Okay, I had one other comment that I would like to see in there, but, and again, I'm, I don't, not trying to get into the weeds, but, um, I would like it to be on a, they get paid on a reimbursement basis for those tickets in that, instead of.
What tickets? Yes.
Well, well, while they sell these, they sell the books in it, they sell the books ahead currently, and if I go and I get on the boat and it's $5, they give us that back and we, I think we need to do something on a reimbursement basis because we have no way of knowing actually how much money is brought into the till. Unless we can either have numbered receipts or something that will work, I think, I don't, I think we need a system of accountability that's much better than what has been done in the past. And that's more directed to Bob, I guess, Mr. Messer.
We weren't subsidizing in the past and I think what you're saying, Madam Mayor, if I may, is, and I apologize for jumping in, but I think what you're saying is that there's going to be city money added into the, into this, uh, into this system as described, then, then there needs to be a way to track, accurately track, uh, the amount of money that, or the tickets with the subsidy, so that an auditor going in could say, "Ah, number five, uh, it relates to this something."
Well, weren't, aren't we doing that with the cab companies? It's on a reimbursement basis.
And with the Catalina Express.
What?
With the Catalina Express as well.
Yeah, something like that, instead of.
How about, instead of tickets, how about hours of, of boat operating hours?
You may have, you know, 16 hours in a day and carry four people.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the, it doesn't work out if, if you get reimbursed on four tickets, but you're out there working for 16 hours.
I guess the summer's the one, summer's one thing and winter's another. I, I just, in, moving forward in the future, I would like for us to, to be able to have a better, better handle on what, what Bob has had to guess, you know, had, had to work those numbers with you. Be nice if there was a system that was a little more, something that will allow better accountability, yes, thank you. Yeah, that's all, thank you. Is there a motion or comments from the floor?
I'm not, I'm just, I'm, I'm reading, um, I'm reading this staff report and I'm just, we're going in a different direction then than what, staff report?
No, we're going to ask, well, there might be a motion or not.
There's a potential motion on number one.
Okay, on number one, and then number two, we're not, we're going to scrap number two, so we're not going to.
It's an either or.
Pursue the city-run operation, shoreboat service.
Two's an option if one doesn't work.
Okay, so we still, so number two's still on the table if number one does not come through for us.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I like that.
Is there a motion?
Wait, oh, my last question was, um, I, I equally am uncomfortable with laying it out there up to a $250,000 subsidy. So, you know, if we were to receive $500 from, from MTA or whatever, $50,000 from MTA, $200,000 of that will, we would be pulling from the harbor fund? Is that what we're saying? So I know we're saying up to $250,000, but it just seems like an arbitrary number to me.
Well, the $250,000 isn't, is not an arbitrary number. It was after Brian and I met with Island Enterprises, discussed their financials with both their accountant and their CPA. They described how they accounted for all the expenses. Brian and I then, uh, discussed what would it cost for the city to operate and we came up with, well, it seems reasonable that they would be losing money if they operated at 6,000 hours a year with the expenses they described, but the expenses they described seem to be much larger than what I would consider reasonable. I think that they are taking some of the costs of their overall business and over allocating it to the shoreboat and causing the shoreboat business to seem like it's losing $573,000 a year if they operated, uh, the full schedule. So the $250,000 is, is our estimate of what the loss would be operating at a, at the full schedule of just over 6,000 hours a year. And having approximately $250,000 of revenue would leave a shortfall of between 200 to $250,000. That's where that number came from. So it wasn't an arbitrary number, it was.
I apologize, that was a poor use of a word. But I, I guess basing a subsidy on one particular business is where my concern is. So we have a potential for a competition and a potential, we don't even know what's on the table to be offered to us. So that's where I'm saying maybe their business plan is something totally different. I don't think we know until we, if we were to go out for RFP, then we would know what we were looking at.
Okay.
So Cindy, are you recommending going out for an RFP without putting any money in at all as a subsidy?
Just saying, knowing that there is a potential for a subsidy and not putting a number.
The problem with that is, that's what we did a half a year, more than a half a year ago, and we only got one response from the incumbent saying that they would need a $573,000 subsidy. So doing the exact same thing as what we did a half a year ago might yield the same result.
And you're just saying there would be a subsidy, but the subsidy is not determined at this time, kind of.
Right, a negotiated amount. Okay, I, I would, I would play with that.
With the up to?
With the up to.
Okay. I move to direct the City Manager and Harbor Master to issue a second request for proposal offering up to a $250,000 subsidy to operate a year-round shoreboat service if documented need is demonstrated, and we know that, we know there's a need there.
I'll second it.
One last question, sorry. This does not preclude Island Enterprises from participating, right?
It does not, no, they may.
So, so he has the opportunity to participate in this round? Okay, great.
Two players now.
Okay.
Maybe three. And how long, just real quick before we run, how long is the, the, what kind of a timeline do you think we're looking on to get the new RFP together, get it out, and then how long do the people have to respond? How long is that?
Harbor Master, Mr. Messer, what do you?
I think we gave, uh, a month. At the last one, it, uh, it was released on March 18th and it was due back April 15th. It's pretty fast.
Okay.
Okay.
And, um, and then it's another month before it hits the council, at least.
I would, I would hope that we could get it back, you know, very quickly, turn it around after we receive the RFPs and we go through them and get it to council right away, hopefully within that two-week period, uh, because now's the time where somebody's going to have to start building boats if Island Enterprises isn't the winner of the bid.
So you think February, perhaps?
What is it right now?
Middle of November.
Probably mid-January.
Like that?
Mid-January?
Yeah, okay. Were you going to say something?
I, I just, I know RFPs are always a little slow during the holiday time, so I build in an extra two to, two to four weeks there, just, just to be cautious.
Cause you're slow or because?
No, 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 in terms of.
I mean, this is a time, members of the community are always asking us to not do things in the summer. This is our slowest time of year. So it's the, the time where everybody is planning their business for the next year. I think it's a good time to move.
Well, and it's interesting because I read in the, uh, in the log, they really cover Avalon well, don't they?
Yes.
So, uh.
We, we, we try to keep them informed, yes.
Yeah, so that information will be out there through that and whatever other avenues and venues you use. Anyway, okay, is there a motion?
I made the motion.
Second?
You seconded it.
Yes? Call for the vote.
Comments?
You want more?
No. Did you ask for comments?
No.
She did.
I'll ask again.
Yes.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Councilman.
All eyes?
All eyes. And now there's, uh, item number 11, I understand.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, um, this is, uh, you do not have a written report, but you do have a report available or that the Director of Public Works cannot provide. And this is a continuing discussion of reporting possible action for the city to provide water to local residents as an urgency measure. And we're asking for your discussion and direction in that regard.
Okay, um, Dennis, I'm, I'm working kind of with Dennis on this, um, and I just wanted to let you, the public know and Dennis know and the council know. Um, I reached out to, um, two freight providers, that would be Curtin Maritime and Avalon Freight Service. Um, I went to Avalon Freight Service first because they are our freight carrier. But I wanted to see, I wanted to, um, check, check the waters all the way around to see exactly how we could find, um, possible, um, uh, rate, um, a request that they would help us out with the rates of the water coming to Catalina. So I also simultaneously talked, spoke to Mike at Vons, since, since Dennis went out to, um, I think he went out to Refresh and Aquafini and, um, a couple of different, I actually called Nestle as well, tried to find the best price I can on, on a gallon of water. So the big expense was the freight cost. So I did speak to Greg Bombard and he was kind enough to say that he was going to reach out to the Public Utilities Commission to see if they could waive some of the costs on the freight for the, the water being shipped over. When Mike found out that we were discussing this, Mike, um, um, from Vons, he reached out to me and said, "Hey, um, I'm willing to work with you as well to see if, you know, you guys could use us as, as purchasing the water from us. If you could help me out," that's Mike was saying, "If I, we could help him out with the freight." So I'm still, still, um, trying to get some pricing on, on 10 or 20,000, 10, maybe 10,000, start out 10,000 gallons of water, which is like two, two truckloads full. I think each truck, flatbed truck can hold up to four thousand.
It, it depends on the containers, Joe.
Right.
We started with 25,000, that's 100 pallets and it's, believe it or not, 10 trailers.
Yeah.
So, you know, half of that would be five, six, six trailers for 10, 12,000.
Right.
We got, uh, we got five-gallon containers down to 89 cents, but as you said, um.
People can't lift five gallons of water to take them up to their houses.
Vons did come through on one-gallon containers, 89 cents, when they're on sale.
Okay.
Uh, if Mr., uh, if the Bombards will help or, uh, then of course this will come down. I don't have that information. Uh, we reached out to Nestle, uh, went directly to their customer service, uh, we're trying to get them to donate, we're trying to get them to comp some of it, uh, told them that we would, um, list it in the paper and people of Avalon would be very grateful for it. We reached out to Fiji Water. They also produce, uh, their water's expensive, but, uh, um, she's passing along the request up the ladder and they should get back to us soon. Uh, we tried to go directly to the manufacturer, but we're having broker issues, uh, they just don't sell to the public without going through a broker.
May I ask you some questions?
Yes.
Kind of, just so I can try to grasp, I, I understand your concept and how you want to help, totally. I'm just curious how far we would go. Let's say they, now you're saying the five, okay, if we've got 4,500 people in Avalon, are you thinking every man, woman, and child gets a gallon of water once a week? We give a family five gallons? What do you, so we can try to grasp?
You show your subsidy card and you grab a gallon of water? Simple as that. You, you show your subsidy card and it's got four people on it, you grab four gallons of water?
How often?
Let's just do it once or twice. I mean, we, I'm just trying to ease some of the tension in town, some, trying to ease some of the stress and the pressure that people are on. That's, that's it. It's just a simple, kind gesture from the city of Avalon to the community. Just the same thing the island company's doing, they're trying to ease some of that by, by offering some of their water. That's why I was asking about Joe Machado Field Water, non-potable water, drinking water, anything we can do. We're, we're going into stage four now. This is, this is going to get scary, okay? Um, there's no short-term remedies right now. I'm, I'm the only one that's proposing a short-term remedy and that's just for a couple of gallons of water for somebody to, to stop by Vons. We could even go through Vons, I'll bet you Vons would help us out and they'd take the water straight into, straight into the store and you, people could pick them up as they're shopping.
Majority only in 89 cents anyway.
Well, that's, that, that's still expensive. I mean, we're not going to pay 80, a dollar a ga, for a gallon of water. I refuse to do that. We're trying to get it donated, because they do, some of these big water providers do donate water. And then we're, and then Greg Bombard said that he'll work with us. Um, once we come up with a price and, once we come up with a price and an availability of the water, then we propose that. It's, it's obvious, gallon of water weighs eight, eight something, 8.3, um, pounds per gallon. So we already know how much it weighs. Um, if we got 10,000 gallons, we know how much it's going to weigh. So with that, then Greg will be able to give us a price on what he can break that price down to, because Vons is 89 cents a gallon, but half of that is probably freight cost. So if we could get, get all this water for, you know, 30, 20 cents a gallon on the mainland and then, you know, have it shipped over for 10 cents, then maybe we can only be spending 30 cents a gallon on water. I'm trying, me and Dennis are trying to work together to get the best price, get the best bang out of our buck, the consumer's dollar, the taxpayers' dollar for Avalon, because bottom line, the people are paying for this water. It's because it's coming out of our budget. But I'm trying to get a breakdown on less than 80, less than what we can buy it in the store for. I, I want to give it away to people, but for, um, a, a cost that's, that's less to, um, the consumer through the city buying in bulk.
So then my next question would be, which would be a council decision, is how much are we wanting to spend if, if in fact we want to do this? How much are we willing to spend? Because that has to be a council decision.
Right.
So, um, and I don't know when we have that dialogue, because I know we're, we're spending staff time and, and you're spending your time and I respect that and Greg Bombard and everybody's time. But I think until we, we can make a decision on is this something we want to do and how much are we willing, I, I really don't want to be spinning our wheels. If, if, if the council says, "Well, heck, we don't want to do this," then we're spinning our wheels, Joe.
Right, well, yeah, exactly. So, so it's, I've already briefly spoke to Bob about it. Um, it's, it's a non-budgeted item, so it's, we don't have the money out there for it. But going into stage four, we ought to start thinking about doing something for the people of Avalon and that's why I'm coming to you guys and I'm asking you, what, any little thing we do for them, they will be grateful. I would be. People love free stuff. Hey, take a gallon of water. We're going into stage four. I think it's just a kind gesture that we're going to do and it's not going to solve the water problem, it's just going to tell people that we care about them and that we would like them to have some fresh drinking water for free, you know? And, and basically the, the people of Avalon will be.
Well, it's, it's almost a thank you for what they've done, you know? You know, thank you for what you've done and here's a gallon of water.
We asked them to, Addison asked them to draw back 25% and they withdrew back, they drew back 40%. I think it's the least we can do. So that's why Dennis is spending some of his time, I'm spending some of my time. Um, we haven't, we haven't asked a lot from staff on this. It's just been pretty much a discussion item that me and Dennis have gone out to try to do some research on. Martin Curtin said he can't deliver the water because he doesn't have a place to deliver to. They won't let him deliver out, out at, um, um, out at, um, Pebly Beach. But if we do have an issue with water, he's, he said he's got a couple of tankers, you know, he provides water to San Clemente Island in a 250,000 gallon tanker. So he said, you know, he can deliver the big load if we need it, um, if it comes down to that. But Greg Bombard's willing to work with us on the level that I'm talking about right now and that is awesome. We, but I can't ask him for a break, for a price break yet because he wants to know how many pounds are we talking about. So I'm working with Mike at Vons.
Yeah.
Like Dennis is, and with Nestle, if we go with Nestle or we go with Aquafini or we go with Fiji Water and they, they say, "Hey, we'll give you 10,000 gallons, just put us on the front of your newspaper." Um, that's, that's, that's a no-brainer.
Rule of thumb, if we're going to figure out freight charges or barge charges, it's eight pounds per gallon.
Right.
And what staff and I have found that if, if we're going to use gallon containers, we're going to have, um, an issue, uh, with the landfill and, uh, CRV values.
However, the five-gallon containers, Joe, are deposits, they go back, so the water's actually...
I see.
Yeah, I know it's hard to carry, but that's something else.
We're gonna, yeah, we'd have to have a delivery system, all the same, and then they'd each have to have dispensers, so we're talking about dispensers as well, so...
Of course, Public Works gotta go pick it up, and then we gotta store the trailer someplace, so that's something else to consider, and so...
Okay, so, I guess I'm looking for some brainstorming here to figure out whether this is gonna be worth it or not.
If I could just add one thing, we are still pursuing the city of Long Beach who has water for maybe pennies, like literally, literally pennies on the gallon.
Yeah.
And they're working with central...
Drinking water?
Yes, potable drinking water through, through their water system that they can transfer from the central water basement, but the issue is, it's getting it here, and in what capacity, and how we get it, but we're still working with them, because Long Beach wants to help us.
Okay, well, Avalon Freight Service said they'll help us out if they, if they can get a waiver from the Public Utilities Commission to help us out with that, so I think we're moving in the right direction, I think we just need some more solid information about where this water's gonna come from, who's gonna give it to us, I mean, if someone decides to give, they want, one of these big water providers wants to give us 10,000 gallons of water, I don't want to deny it, and the landfill, we're just gonna, you know what we can do? Let's just, let's just say that we will help with the cost of, I mean, they get, they get a redemption value for all that plastic, so, yeah, there's gonna be a landfill problem, there's gonna be more plastic in the landfill, but people will have water, I mean, nobody's gonna complain about a piece of plastic when you can get a sip of water out of it, especially when we start going thirsty here, and I'm not saying that's gonna happen, I'm hoping it's not, but I'm trying to curtail that a little bit, and keep people's, just keep their, keep them up, instead of, you know, get them, you know, people are down a little bit, they're a little depressed, they're a little bit concerned, a little bit worried, some people are a little bit pissed off about it, so I'm just trying to do something to curve that and keep people up, instead of, so, and I think that's our, they're looking at us for these answers, and we've gotta be ahead of the curb here, we gotta be the visionaries here, we can't be one saying, whoa, I didn't realize this was gonna happen, the writing's on the wall, so I'll just keep working with Dennis on it, and we'll try to come up with some more information.
Council have any comments or thoughts?
I, just right out of the gate, I think it's incredibly valuable that we gather this information, I think it's a little bit too soon for giving the water out, but when we, when and if we are in stage four, that's where we're gonna be. Right now, the need, and those that I'm speaking to on a daily basis, it's the non-potable, it's the, I want, you know, potable in the sense of I want to take a shower, it's not necessarily the drinking water, it's the washing the yards, vegetation, golf carts, things like that. Regardless, we would need this information, so I don't think it's been a waste of staff resources to gather this information, and we've been talking about the difficulties, and how will we get water here, how would that happen, so it's a good use of time. Joe, I applaud your efforts in wanting to wrap your arms around the community and say, hey, as a council, we need to do something that lifts the spirits, and for me, that is the discussion with the PUC and looking at the tariff, and then transferring that information to the community, saying, hey, we are moving forward, we are gonna meet with the PUC, we are gonna get more, more information, we are gonna make some strides for our community, that's, that's where I see we're really wrapping our arms around, we're not, we're just not sitting back anymore. One of the other comments that I think it's important to raise is that we were just talking about an hour ago about media coverage on the island, and the importance of keeping this positive, given our current situation, that we're not in dire straits right now, and in the city of Avalon, which is where our visitors come to, we are able to produce the water that we need, and we are able to accept the visitors in town, so if we were to, if it were to be widely publicized that, hey, we're in such dire straits, we're giving away water, my fear would be that that would negatively impact the community, and I know that's something we just talked about not wanting to do.
Thank you. May I just ask a water-related question, but kinda unrelated? How does Emerald Bay get their water?
They have a well.
Holland's well.
Holland's well.
Does that go dry?
They dried up the last well, no, they, Addison drilled a new well, a couple hundred feet below sea level, so they have plenty of water, but I think they have to process it, because it's a little bit...
Okay, that was not my question there. Okay, thank you, Joseph.
No, thank you.
Councilman.
We'll be back, we'll be back with that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, before we go into closed session, we have an Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees meeting.
Yes, we do.
Take it away, Oley.
I'd like to call to order the Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees of Thursday, Tuesday, November 15th, is that what it is? Forty days of Christmas. Roll call, please.
Trustee Cassidy?
Here.
Trustee Hernandez?
Here.
Trustee Marshall?
Here.
Trustee Sampson?
Here.
Chairman Olson.
Yes, still here. Any announcements? Don't see any. Any written communications?
No.
Don't see any. Any presentations? Chip's gone. Oral communication? The Board of Trustees will accept comments from the public at this time, no action will be taken on non-agenda items at this meeting, speakers should limit their comments to three minutes or less. Flock into the podium. Okay, we're done there. Consent calendar.
We have two items on the consent calendar tonight, the first one is actions from the October 18th, 2016 Hospital Board of Trustees, second item is the CEO Board Report for October 2016, and the CFO's Report for September 2016, we're asking you to approve both items.
Thank you. Board comments?
I'll make a motion to approve consent calendar items one and two.
A second?
Any discussion? Call for the question.
All eyes.
General business is none?
Can I?
Can you?
Oh, no, no, I'm, okay, I'm sorry, I get it.
Members' reports.
I have none.
I have a question.
Okay.
And I don't know if this is the place to bring it up, but I understand family planning services are going to cease in Avalon as of November 30, and I don't, I know that, I have, I believe you sent a letter to the administrator of the hospital, Jason Paray, because we don't know, I don't know, and I think you reached out to, or had somebody's reaching out to Conny Seibel?
Yes, I did.
Okay, we haven't heard back anything, that happened pretty quickly, I imagine.
Yeah, I, if you would like me to comment, I had asked Mr. Paray if he had reached out to Supervisor Kenaby's office, and per your inquiry, Mayor, you had suggested that even if they can't provide the level of service they're currently providing, could they provide a reduced level and find resources to do that? Connie, Ms. Seibel, said that she'd received the communication, she had not yet heard from the hospital CEO, she expects to, to have that conversation, and I think also you said, and you were inquired about the fact that if they are providing those services countywide, the question would be, to ensure that we have the services that other people in the county have, that that would be a good question for both the Health, Department of Health and environmental, the health, health people, and also for the county, that we want to, would like to be treated in the same manner as other county residents as we are, and so that's, so I think, I think Mr. Paray will be making that, having that conversation.
Correct, because they were closing down Compton and Avalon only, from what I understand, so, and you know, it's quite difficult for people to get to the mainland for service, so, anyway, okay, thank you very much.
Any other board comments?
Still proceeding with the hospitals, the new hospital meetings that we're having, so that's, we're gonna have another one this week, and then a strategic planning meeting as well, with getting the community together and get their information on that, so we're still proceeding with that, I'm still part of that group, so, Oley, I think you are as well, so...
Thursday at 5:00.
Thursday at 5:00, okay. I really appreciate you bringing that up, that was actually a question I was gonna ask at one point, so the, both Joe, Councilmember Sampson and Olson, you have been requested to sit on the committee?
Yes.
So, could we get some regular report-outs?
As soon as we have something to report.
Okay.
Now, we're looking at funding sources, we had a meeting with Mr. Bombard to talk about a possible funding source, and also we've been delving into the city budget to find out if there's additional monies, or what some small increases in some existing taxes might generate, and so we're gonna talk about that on Thursday, maybe we'll come up with a plan, and then we can report back on that plan. I have nothing, since everybody's taken it from me, so we will adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, and now we will go into closed session.
Mayor and council, this is a closed session to provide instruction to the city's labor negotiator, city manager for non-represented management employees.
Okay, thank you, good night, Tony, and thank you all for coming.
Have a nice Thanksgiving.
Always happy, son.
Oh, please.
No, poor Blackson.
Thank you very much, meeting is adjourned.
Good night, Tony.
Have a nice Thanksgiving.
Good night, thank you.